Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our inspirational word this morning comes from Proverbs. A wise, mature person is known for his understanding. The more pleasant his words, the more persuasive he is. And our warden has the dog this morning.
Good morning. This is kennel number six. She was found in Penfield Township, Red Nose Pit. She's around a year old and she's available for adoption now. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
And only seventeen dogs?
Yes, and only seventeen dogs.
That's great.
That's a good-looking dog.
Under resolutions, I don't think we have investments, so no investments. Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Cowsky?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Cowsky?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Cowsky?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Mr. President. You like the sound of it, don't you?
I'll visit you at the tower.
You don't have a tower. I do have a number of personnel issues this morning that I'd like to discuss with the Board. There'll be some potential hires over at Workforce Development and the Collection Center. Also, I am a receipt of a completed contract with the Teamsters and our Record Center Personnel. An update on the United Order Workers, negotiations at Job and Family Services, and the Steel Workers, negotiations with respect to the Court of Courts Treasurer and the Auditor's Office. So I want to brief you on all of those things. You already have a lot of information and I just want to give you a progress report and where we're at. Also, the potential sale and purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve way of the reading of the Minnesota November 16.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Posing Senate Bill 235, property tax exemption for industrial and commercial development.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to just point out the reason that we're wanting to send a message down to Columbus about this. This is a troublesome bill. I know that Commissioner Calhoun said it's been brought up at the County Commissioners' Association of Ohio. Lots of governmental bodies are very concerned about it. The Ohio Municipal League, County Commissioners Association, Township Association, Auditors' Association, the libraries, superintendents of the state of Ohio, and there's a good reason for that concern. This bill would actually exempt from property taxes the increased value of property on which industrial or commercial development is planned until completion of the new or redeveloped facilities. But it gets even worse. No local control into the decision to actually grant this freeze or exemption. And just to elaborate a little more, under the bill, a freeze on the value of commercial or industrial property would be granted as a matter of right to any owner of property in an area zone for commercial or industrial use who files an application with the county auditor of the intent, the intent, to develop or redevelop that property. This also would be no local control over the level or duration of the exemption, no requirement of the property owner to make specific investments, no commitment to hire a specified number of employees, or none of the usual commitments in exchange for property tax exemptions that we're asked to make decisions on. I've asked our Economic Development Director, Jerry Good, to take a look at this, and Jerry, would you want to share any thoughts that you have? You've dealt with this area for a long, long time and, you know, there's a reason why we have you in the position you're in and wanted to get your feedback on this.
Yeah. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on this. This bill, in my opinion, is poorly written. It reverses fifty years of established practices regarding how local property tax exemptions are approved. As you know, we have three tools in Ohio. We have enterprise zones, we have CRAs, and we have tax increment financing. Anytime you're looking at a commercial-industrial investment, there are other impacts other than just the property value of the piece of property that's being approved. You look at what it does to the local roads and the impact that it has on that. What does the job creation look like? What is the payroll? And we always in the past, throughout the state, have allowed local governments to make that decision based on the size of those investments and to grant them in a form that is complementary of the investment being made. In reviewing this bill, this bill goes beyond that and just puts, grants a cart-blanc, call it, exemption for any commercial-industrial developer that wants to do this project and takes away all local control. So, in my opinion, and having worked in this area for almost twenty years, I think while the bill may have been well-intended to encourage spec building development in the state to prepare sites for property development, this bill doesn't actually do that. So in my opinion, I think it's poorly written and I would highly recommend that we don't support this.
It's also a ten-year exemption also.
Yeah.
It's not going to be ten years exempted.
Yeah. And as you know, we usually set the exemption based on the project.
Right.
We could go up to ten years, or we could go seven, depending on how big the project is and how many jobs are created and what the payroll looks like. But there's a lot of other impacts with projects that communities have to deal with, and a lot of that is traffic, damage to roads, you know, if there's a lot of trucks come in, and you have to play all that as you're looking at the project and the amount of exemption you're going to give. And this, this just gives cart-blanch to any commercial or industrial developer.
Well, we had a lot of discussion, I was in Columbus on Friday, our Commissioners' Association Board meeting and everybody on board, and testimony was, you know, given by our organizations, but they still don't think it's going to do anything to stop. It started in southwest Ohio, apparently.
Yeah.
And this is driven, you know, as Commissioner Dan Troy from Lake County said, you know, you don't address one issue in one county in the state that affects all eighty-eight, but it looks like it's heading that way, so.
Exactly. But I think it's poorly written.
Yeah, it's quite troublesome. I was very disappointed to hear that our local state senator actually voted for it. You know, we're told that folks are looking out for us, and then the votes show something else down in Columbus. It's now over on the House side, and so we're hoping that maybe they'll be a little bit more responsible. I understand that Representative Smith, Chair of Finance Committee, says that he wants to come back with a revised version, but of course now we're coming into, this is the most dangerous time of year in legislation in Ohio. It's called lame duck. The election is taking place. The folks who aren't returning get into some devilish activity, and those who are sticking around feel like they've been empowered to try to slide things underneath the radar during the month of December. And so anything that's moving in lame duck, especially something like this, and taking away local control and providing an exemption for ten years just for the intent of development is just very overreaching.
Well, and the other thing it encourages people to do, there's this thing called 1031 Tax Exchange, where, you know, what's to keep one developer from keeping this development off the tax rolls for ten years and then flipping it to another developer who wants to do the same thing?
Right.
And the next thing you have is another ten years of exemption. So I don't think they've done enough thinking on this. If the bill was just focused towards new tax roll dollars in encouragement to make, have people build new facilities to attract development, that would be one thing, but this is written in such a manner, it includes existing property, so. And people are already counting on those tax dollars, especially schools, local governments, to use that. And in the environment we live today, where we've seen cut, cut, cut of local government funds, in my opinion, this is not good legislation.
And the other problem, too, is if this goes forward, the entities that are in there now will have to pick up the difference of what they're not paying anymore, so.
Exactly. It's not fair to them.
Right.
Tech shift.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jer.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
They call that neutral for Grover Norwood.
Yeah, yeah, revenue neutral.
Yeah, revenue neutral.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve the semi-annual revolving loan fund report for period January 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2016, estimated by Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Cowsky?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Amendment Resolution 16707, adopted November 9, 2016, number two, Child Support Enforcement Agency lease agreement. The amendment is to reflect the monthly payment will be $2,748.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize lease agreement with Port Authority for 5,000 square feet of Unit 2 at 530 South Abbey Road, Illyria, at the cost of $66,996, effective or attracted October 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2019, and all parties are to execute and pay out before the prosecutors for the best of form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you want to have any discussion on this, about what we're doing with Job Family Services?
Well, this is the expansion of the Education Center in regards to our solid waste district.
No.
No, this isn't that part there?
No, sir.
Which one is this?
This is the...
Yes, it is.
Is this the Job and Family Services?
This is the Job and Family Services.
And we moved in for the training.
Right.
They're both same 5,000 square foot.
The, what we did was entered into a partnership with Job and Family Services to develop workspace. There is a work requirement for certain classes of people receiving assistance to Job and Family Services, so that work element has to be completed. Companies actually do that. They bring work in and they employ people that have to make that commitment. So what we did is we did a build-out in the building over there, a building within a building. It has a separate entrance and so forth, and they will, the company will be operating out of there and will be sending workers over there to do various work tasks. I couldn't tell you definitely what they are. They're, they change. It's not, it's not a permanent type of work that they're doing. And the relationship with Job and Family Services comes into play because this release is a bit high because the ROI on the build-out is achieved in three years. After that, we'll reevaluate the lease. It'll be more in line with market forces, but we had to recover the cost of building that center. I think this will go on for several years, well into the future, but you also have an improved space. Should it end in three, four, or five years, it's been paid for without local dollars and you have an improved space, plus you have a place for those folks to work in the city of Illyria here, and that is a lot easier to get over there than some other places in the county. So it's a good relationship. Mary Lou and her staff were really good to work with, and I'm looking forward to a successful outcome of this because it's up and moving now. So this is just the final piece.
There's people actually using this center?
My understanding is they're working now, yeah.
Really? Okay.
And this was a design build, that's why it moved rather quickly, getting it done.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Under Workforce Development Amendment Resolution 16708, adopted in November 9, 2016, lease agreement. Said amendment is to reflect the monthly payment for July 2016 through May 2017 will be $2,198.17, and June 2017 will be $2,198.13.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve an enterance purchase service agreement with Vocal Link Language Services with funds available through TANF and WEO to provide language interpreter services for limited English-speaking persons, effective December 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, and the cost of $9,000 per minute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye. Aye.
Under CBCF, entering a sub-grant award agreement with Ohio Department of Public Safety for residential substance abuse treatment for CBCF and the total project amount of $75,497.48. This is a short-term grant for substance abuse treatment that would allow for additional staff members as well as other program needs to address the founder substance abuse, effective or attracted to October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017, and the cash match of $18,924.98 is available in their accounts of residential needs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, request Nuaca to place Baumhart Road and State Route 113 intersection improvement on their transportation plan for federal funds. Authorize engineer to execute the applications. Total project is $2,511,000. Eighty percent is $2,800, and then twenty percent is $502.200.
$502,200.
Oh, my goodness!
$502,200!
Wow.
It's going to be a long day of numbers today, huh?
That's coffee and more sleep, I think. Wow. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This just shows you how long it takes to get processed through. You're talking for a project in 2022, six years from now, just so people get an idea. It's six years off. Sometimes it can get moved up if dollars are available, but that's the target point.
Which township is this in?
Baumhart 113, that would be, is it Brownham?
Henrietta, I think, right?
Henrietta.
Henrietta.
Henrietta, okay.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Cowsky? Aye.
And this one is just request Nuaca to place Cable Road on their transportation plan for federal funds. Authorize engineer to execute. So project is $325,000, eighty percent is $260,000, and the local match of $65,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Award the contract to Keighoga Bridge, Seville, in the amount of $777,514.40 for the Burzley Road Bridge 0412 replacement project. Five bids were received on November 17th, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before January 16th and complete on or before September 1st, 2017. This will be paid ninety-five percent federal highway administration through CAO and the remaining five percent, $38,875.75 from the MVGT account. No substitutions for project will be used, but lake area construction for the guardrail, bridge rail, CJZAC Company for the landscaping, and Eru Block Tab for the asphalt paving portion of the project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Award contract to Crossroads Asphalt Recycling Columbia in the amount of $292,544.85 for the middle ridge road widening and resurfacing project. Five bids were received on November 18th, being the most responsive, complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before January 23rd, 2017, and complete before October 30th, 2017. Eighty percent federal highway administration through CAO and remaining twenty percent, $810.97 from OPWC. No substitutions for the project, but we'll use American Railway Logistics for the striping and Smith paving for concrete portion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I, I'm waiting on some paperwork to come down. I noticed that we didn't have it on the agenda, and I'm not sure why, but yesterday the Port Authority had a TFA hearing and then proceeded to pass a resolution to issue $43 million and some change worth of bonds so that we can work with the company that has purchased Wellesley and Village and retire some debt over that we had issued a few years ago and then infuse it with some new dollars to improve the facility. I got to tell you, it's been touch and go the last two years with them over there. They did it under a forbearance with Huntington Bank for quite a while. Two times, it appeared that they had a successful partner, only to find that those relationships collapsed. So this one actually was finished up just recently, and so we'll have a new owner, and there are regional companies that owns facilities like that, so hopefully that brings the strength back to Wellesley and Village and brings it back to where it needs to be. As you know, they canceled their, I call it respite care, but their adult daycare because they went on able to sustain that, and that service really didn't have, was no place else in Lorraine County. It was a very vital service. Now, why am I telling you this? Because we need to have a resolution on this agenda somewhere. While the port's doing all that, it's, those conduit ponds belong to the county, so I've just had Lisa call Mr. Metzger to find out where that is, because I'm certain that you have to pass a resolution blessing all of that work this morning.
We always have in the past.
I thought we did. So I'm going to yield the counsel, but I'm waiting for him to come down now with that resolution, and all I'd say is that I hope everybody has a very happy holiday Thanksgiving time. Thank you.
Mr. Enos?
Commissioners, I do have several matters of pending or imminent litigation to provide you updates with.
Jerry never has to worry about job security, does he?
Not while we're making people mad.
Commissioners' Report.
Well, Sunday, I attended the New Life Assembly Church in Wellington. We were all invited to attend to hear testimonies of young women who went through, it's called teen challenge, but they were young women. You don't have to be teenagers to go through that, and it's to help with recovery from drugs and alcohol. Fostimity and his wife were there, too, so it was very nice, very touching testimonies from these young ladies. Monday, I went down to Bread and Brew, that used to be down in our basement here, to meet with Cindy Kerpli, who is the mayor of Rochester. We sat for a couple hours, had a lot of good conversation. One of the things that they're concerned about is an intersection down on Route 511 and 162, so I called Mr. Carney yesterday to talk about that, and he's going to be looking into that for me. And then yesterday, we had our land bank meeting, which you might want to report on a little bit more. I don't bring anything with me, Mr. Cordez, but one of the things I want to point out is our prosecutor's office in our minutes had a goal of recouping $5 million of property taxes, and I just want to commend them. They well surpassed that goal of five million and have collected 8.5 million and are hoping by 10 million by the end of the year, so great job that they're doing there, plus our land bank getting rid of all the blight, and talked about what we're going to do with some of these properties going forward. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy time with your family and friends this weekend. End of my report.
Were you going to expand on land bank, Jim?
I can. I didn't know if any, all three Commissioners are on the land bank, so if any you wish to talk, you want to talk about it today?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Well, county land bank met yesterday, the full board, and went over the progress we've made, actually Pat Metzger, who is running our county land banks down here for the Port Authority issues. But we basically got almost 400 homes in our possession at this point. We are on a mad path to take down 27 homes in sixty-some-odd days in the city of Lorraine.
Just about dropping a home every other day on average in Lorraine, and we, at the same time, concurrently dropping homes in Illyria, too.
Correct. And then we also have, we were, another $1.3 million was given to our county land bank to continue our work. We've been out acquiring houses, 50 or 60 more, I believe, at this point we've acquired.
We have, they're queued. The, I expect that over the next few months, we'll have enough completely acquired that will exhaust those funds, too, because as we found, we need to stand in line naked before they'll give us some warmth and some clothes, so I want to extinguish those funds very rapidly. And I want to restate something I just said. I said we're dropping homes. We're not dropping homes, we're dropping dilapidated properties. They're not homes anymore.
Correct.
I should use a different terminology when it comes to these past dwellings, because they're terrible.
Cleaning up the blight.
The blight. But you're right, we have done approximately 400 homes. We've injected close to $10 million into the economy, which churns here, it's work here, it puts a lot of people to work. The bulk of that has been from outside resources, such as the AG's program early on, and now we're doing the OFA piece, and I expect more OFA money to be coming our way. I know they have more. We're just trying to now do that delicate dance to figure out what's most important to them so we can position ourselves correctly to be successful at getting additional funding.
But there are additional land banks.
There are. As Mr. Metzger said yesterday at the land bank meeting, 18 additional communities have opened up land banks, so.
It's going to be tougher to get money.
The depth of the pool of resources is starting to thin, and so they're going to be using the same amount of money but splashing it over a much wider field of applicants. But the only way that we can be successful is to be out of money, needing money. If we flush a little bit of money because we're trying to manage it better and do, over a longer period of time, they won't give us any more. The good thing is we do have some DRETAC dollars that we have, so we're going to continue to work. We've been directing those DRETAC dollars towards the communities that are outside the census block of the OFA funds. For the, you know, for those that may not realize what that means is that those dollars that we're getting vis-à-vis the state from the federal government can only be used in certain areas of our community. They do not have an umbrella that goes to the four corners of our community, so.
Mostly low to moderate income.
Correct. So you have Illyria, Lorraine, parts of Illyria Township, Sheffield Township. We were able to move five homes out of the seven in Sheffield Township into that, so we're trying to make those funds go as far as possible. But we have been a little bit more restrictive on the local dollars that we do get from the DRETACs that we can serve those communities outside their tracks, because they deserve to be served also. And I will add that with the work of the prosecutor's office and the whole team with the Port Authority and the land bank, those dollars that are being chased down and brought back are mostly going to the schools and the levy activities. They're like taking, you know, some of the burden off the other taxpayers, and quite frankly, I think if everybody paid their taxes when they're supposed to, and we didn't have these problems, we could probably lower the whole property tax load on everybody in Lorraine County. With $10 million, you would think, wow, what a huge number, but it's only a drop in the bucket. Most responsible people never think about not paying their taxes, and if they have, it's because they had a rough patch in their life, they're not paying other bills, but some people purposely for years as a business plan do not pay their taxes. They go into a property, they buy it, they stop paying the taxes, they delete, they deplete the property, and then they move on, like locusts. deplete the property, and then they move on, like Lucas. And you end up with these vacant buildings. Most of them, a lot of them are commercial buildings or older commercial buildings, and they have very little value left when they're done abusing the system on those things, and they walk away. They LLC it, and it's really hard to pierce that and get to them, and at the end of the day, nobody picks them up, and the taxes are actually never paid. With the renewed effort, we're going after personal assets, we're trying to pierce LLCs, let people know that we're serious about chasing them for as long as it takes till they do what they're supposed to do.
And we're government, we're not going anywhere.
Correct. So we have, that's another thing that's come out of all this land bank legislation. Mr. Tellerick did a fine job before, but he lacked a lot of tools and the abilities to do more, and if you notice, you know, Dan seems to be getting much more aggressive with these folks and a lot less tolerant, because he now has a little bit of an arsenal to go after folks with that he lacked before.
Land banks done a lot of good things for the community.
Yes, it has, sir.
And then we've also had a discussion within that about how to work on the current properties we have disposal and possibly letting them grow back to their original growth, so we don't have as much.
Maintenance.
Landscaping to do.
Well, we need to do something. Clearly, we're several years from doing additional housing in some of these communities. I believe that we need to push for the next assistance to come, is to subsidize housing back into those areas. Nobody's going to build a home in those areas when the home costs about a hundred thousand to build and the seller's about forty-five or fifty. The, our NSP dollars assisted with some of the renovations on that, and we did do some builds with the Lorain Metropolitan Housing in some areas, but I can tell you that the homes were being built at a cost of about a hundred and ten thousand or fifteen thousand, but the actual value when they were done was about fifty-five thousand in those areas. We have been talking with Metro Housing again about doing additional work with them, but that was what the NSP funds were allowed to do. The OFA funds, we don't have those type of dollars right now to be doing building of homes. So we're hopeful that reprogramming is gonna happen in the next two to three years. They can't leave all of these hard-hit communities with all these teeth missing up and down blocks all over the place with no assistance to have developers come back and reinvigorate these communities. First, you gotta clean them, then you gotta rebuild them, and we're still in the cleaning phase right now, cleansing.
Also, guys, at the Commissioners Association's Board meeting, working on our legislative platform for the incoming legislature, and also working on the lame duck session, Senate Bill 235 being one of those. Also, we have an issue in regard to indigent defense funding.
Here it is.
We've been handling, oh, is that the?
There's your percentage, Teresa sent to you.
Yeah, okay.
Here's the Medicaid one. Might as well.
I was.
I was there for all the meetings, so.
A lot of good news, wasn't I?
Thank you. You got it in front of me this time, appreciate it.
I was there for all the meetings, but issue being indigent defense, we can probably expect the reimbursement to go down to forty-five or forty-six percent. That's when it was cobbled together with the Commissioners Association, Public Defender's Office, we used different revenues.
And it was supposed to actually get up to fifty, you guys.
Right, we never quite got there, but it was supposed to all come on general revenue fund, and those have been tapering off, so we're probably looking at forty-five or forty percent reimbursement, forty-five, forty-six percent through the end of this budget cycle. Also, we have been working with the Office of Budget Management, our state legislature, trying to find some type of hold harmless in regards to the Medicaid sales tax issue. The state's saying they're looking at a five-hundred-million-dollar reduction and over a billion-dollar reduction in the second year because of Medicaid sales tax. Discussion has been expanding the tax base, adding more items to be taxed, are sales tax eligible?
Yeah.
The governor, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, I know they were trying to expand the base of the sales tax in the past, and I think, you know, even including funeral services and all kinds of things, and I know that there was a lot of pushback. I mean, I just know the makeup of the people down there, and.
So we can't expect any of that.
They, I don't see them expanding the base at all.
Right, so, but on our legislative platform going forward, because we've got the conference in a couple of weeks, we are gonna, again, as our platform items, we picked three things really to work on. Again, the whole hold harmless on the Medicaid sales tax to whatever degree that can be.
The, I actually don't expect any assistance from the state on the reduction of local sales tax. I know that they're pontificating quite a bit down there on this issue, but at the end of the day, we're, as I said to you a few weeks ago, we're on our own.
We're all islands, it's eighty-eight islands.
Eighty-eight islands.
Well, Franklin isn't really an island, they're like the kingdom.
Well, they're the kingdom, but they're outside the gates. They're not allowed inside, the sanctuary.
They get a lot of benefit, though, being so close.
They do. They have all the state jobs, all the money that's being spent on different agencies, but I would not look to the state. I know they're having some nice talk about possibly, you know, some kind of program where they weaned that tax out of the counties. We saw that with the cat tax a while back. Those of us that lived through it, yeah, they helped a little bit after they took away the personal property tax, and then they just, they slowly eviscerated us on that assistance. And, you know, when people wonder why counties are in the, some of the counties in the state they are, they forget all of those things. Quite frankly, we've been talking out here now for several months about the desperate situation we're in, and I completely forgot about that personal property tax that they took away. They gave us a whole provision for a few years, and they took it down, and then they just dropped all that revenue right out of the community, legislative away that revenue.
It's sort of like what they did with the estate taxes of cities.
Right.
Just devastated budgets. Also, though, on a bright note.
Look at all the jobs they created.
Did you notice all the jobs?
Yeah, all those, too.
But on a bright side, we also, again, indigent fees, there's nine-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand dollars that wasn't used in regards to the death penalty cases. We're asking for that to be moved over into general indigent defense, and that looks like that will have a positive move, hopefully to bolster up some of that, to keep us closer to what we're getting. And then also, the Secretary of State's been working well with the Commissioners Association in regards to the voting equipment, we're asking for an eighty-twenty on that split. We've had meetings with my serve on a couple of the committees that happened to.
Is that for the new equipment for?
For the new equipment, correct, hopefully for next year's budget, new biennial budget, which would be the end of June thirtieth of seventeen.
Yeah, we spent a few million the last time, so we're gonna need some real.
Well, we know we had the eBooks this time, though, was the newest one, but the problem was the figures weren't done. It wasn't eighty-twenty split, the problem was the all-in costs weren't there, the routers, the cabling, you know, all of that, so it ended up, we ended up about fifty-seven percent. Lorain County ended up instead of the eighty. Discussion here is, everything balled up, and we're working on committees supportive elections.
Right, the eBooks, though, the eBooks warrant the actual voting equipment, they were.
No, that was the newest update where they helped us. The original was the HAVA back in oh-three and oh-four.
Right.
That was federal dollars, that wasn't state.
Okay, and that was millions we got to for that equipment.
Right, this is state initiative.
And you remember where that unfunded mandate ended up, right? Even after they gave us the money, what was the unfunded portion? The maintenance cost every year, which is huge.
Well, that's our discussion here on the eighty-twenty with Secretary of State's office, and he has been really working hard to get that included somewhere in his budget, a few hundred million dollars to help us in regards to that, because we gotta change it, we have to have elections at work, and our stuff is old. They have deferred a lot, the committee changed, I didn't, but I'm not all the votes. When we had started out our last few meetings, Secretary of State was to have the state pick a program. Everybody's on the same maintenance, everybody's on the same program, things talk to each other, but then again, as the court case management system shows, when there's a preferred vendor, sometimes it doesn't always work like the city of Lorain's issue in regards to their case management company went out of business, so there's been some discussions.
I hadn't heard that. After they installed all that new software, the company.
Half a million dollars out the window.
Yeah, so it's not their fault, it happens, but it's terrible, and, you know, that's a pretty new system they got, too, over there.
Yeah, no, it went south about two years ago. I can't remember the name of the company, but they went south, but that was a concern amongst the other commissioners on the board, by getting exact amount of equipment we need and then having local control over the vendor. I'm up in the air on it, again, you don't wanna go into somebody else picked, and then it goes south, but then again, when you start picking your own and things go south, like the old Debold discussions in oh-three and oh-four that.
Yeah, you were, well, you realize that we started out with New World Technologies at nine-one-one, and the company was having problems, and they were absorbed by Tyler Technology. So we were lucky there. Had New World folded, we would've been in the same.
You'd do all the money, correct.
And, I mean, the due diligence was done, it's just a matter of market forces come into play, and they're out of business or out of business, and you have to start all over again, because you have an unsupported platform.
And then also, we talked about the partnering on the indigent defense funding. There's a big push in the state to raise all of the indigent attorney's fees, as we've had presentations here done. They're trying to get us up to some type of level. Lorain County, again, being the lowest-paying one in the state.
We are the lowest-paying one in the state.
Right, the bottom.
Have been for about fifteen, twenty years.
Exactly. So they want those addressed, but if we're partnering with the state on increased indigent defense funding, maybe we can raise our rates to some degree, because again, they've been working on fifteen or twenty years at the same rates. There are a lot of discussion about the opiates, the transportation, but our decision was, as a governing board, was pick the things that are commissioner-centric, indigent defense is only us, voting is only us, and then the sales tax is only counties. Everybody's got the other issues coming from other associations, so why not pick the three that are directly, that, nobody will speak for the commissioners other than the commissioners, sales tax, indigent defense, and voting, so that's our platform. We have about half a dozen other items that can be brought up in talking points, but those will be secondary to what these three are that are direct needs.
They'll give you more money for the stuff, they'll just take it out of the local government fund. Don't forget to make sure that stays on the list.
That is on the list.
They'll siphon that to.
Yeah, that's always on the list.
Pretend like they're giving you something.
But everybody's got LGF issues, so it's not a commissioner-only centric. The cities are having a problem, schools are having a problem, libraries, so everybody's talking about it, and they've already told us, no, you're not getting any more. So look at the avenues where you can get some successes and have some state money come back into your local community to pay for the things we have to do. We have to hold voting, regardless of what it is, we gotta pay the check, and we have to pay for indigent defense, and we gotta protect our sales tax as much as we can, so.
You know, if somebody would make an initiative to look at legislation that would allow us to do a little bit more with our investment portfolio than the life support things that we're allowed to invest in, we may do a lot better, too. The restrictions there are so severe that you're not able to move with the market.
The market broke nineteen thousand yesterday.
That's great, but the bond market, while it's seen a little bit of an uptick, and we're waiting on the Fed to see where they go, we've been in the basement now for seven years.
Well, the new move is, reading the paper this morning, dollar stores and TJ Maxx are through the roof, the discounters, that's where we need to invest the county portfolio.
Ted.
End of my report.
I would, I have a little bit more higher expectations for Lorain County than that.
That's what I was reading, that's who were the big winners yesterday.
Okay.
End of my report.
Well, just, you know, it's the ongoing example of, as the county administrator pointed out, Columbus has abandoned us, they are not going to come to our rescue, they're not gonna come up, step up to the plate and help us solve our serious problems, and we're gonna have to find a way to take care of ourselves, and that's just the reality of it. And the sad part is that as a result of the election, there's now a supermajority in the House and the Senate, which means that any action that is taken by an emergency measure by the House and the Senate is something that is not subject to any voter action. Senate Bill Five would be an excellent example. The voters were able to go to the booth and say, we disagree with you, we support collective bargaining in Ohio. However, if the legislature wanted to revisit that, and I wouldn't be surprised if they don't, they certainly have the votes to do it through an emergency measure, and the voters won't be able to say anything about it. Elections have consequences. You just turned all your power and authority over to the legislature in one-party rule, and you won't be able to overturn anything that's passed by an emergency measure down there in Columbus, so lost the checks and balances that we hear are so important to voters. Had a chance to attend the Lorain County Township Association meeting over in Olmsted Township, which a lot of folks don't realize, we have eighteen townships over in Cuyahoga, they have one, which is a member of our association. The folks there were just super-friendly, weren't they, Jerry? Yeah, just really nice folks, and made us all kinds of homemade soups and fed us very well, and then they gave us a presentation on government needing to look at its personnel policies regarding medical marijuana, which was an interesting topic and certainly sparked a lot of questions and good, healthy conversation. I wanna congratulate the YWCA and all the recipients of the Women of Achievement Awards. I understand Mary Santiago, also Judge Boros, I think were two recipients, didn't have a chance to attend that, but I understand that it went very well. Just, you know, very impressed by the progress we're making by the land bank. We are literally transforming neighborhoods and communities, and it's making a big, big difference, especially as the communities of Lorain and Elyria will tell you. However, it's important to stress that we're working closely with the townships, and as long as they're getting possible properties to us, we're getting them in the queue and making sure that things get done there as well, too. Also had the opportunity on Monday to attend the Elyria City Council meeting, they had a presentation on the future of the Midway Mall. Thought it was very informative, it was obviously a mixed use, where you'd have retail there, also office buildings that would probably line up along West River Road. The center would be designed in kind of a U shape, so that any store that you walked out of, you could literally look and see, you know, the names of all the other stores that you can literally walk to. Behind that, the proposal was for some apartments and then also some townhomes, but that is something that the city says now that it's turning over to the mall and its investors, so it can go out and try to attract other investors that may wanna come in and take a look at redeveloping that property. We're planning on engaging them and seeing if there's some ways that we can plug in and help out as well, too. I've always believed that Midway Mall should be the center of commerce, there's a reason why we call it Midway Mall, and hopefully have a brighter future for that. I thought it was kinda interesting talking with Jerry Good, our economic development person, he looked at that and said, yeah, that's what we've had some discussions about, what that mall should probably look like. So Jerry has a great wealth of knowledge, he's been down this road many times before, and he knows the direction we need to go with things, and it's a valuable resource for us to have. The Lorain County Community Alliance will be having its roundtable on December fourth in one of the adjacent rooms here on the fourth floor, the county administration building. Obviously, the public is welcome, but we'll be having representatives from the.
December fifth, right? For a second?
Oh, December second, did I say the fourth?
Yes.
I'm sorry. That's my mistake.
Matt will be here on the fourth.
I'll be here on the fourth. We'll be meeting in the parking garage, but on December second, on December second, we'll have our government forum and to update everybody on what's going on, on the municipal level, township level, the state level, and, you know, I think the time has certainly come that we need to have our legislators not just tell us they're fighting for us, they need to start demonstrating during this upcoming budget that local government funds are going to be coming back where they belong, back to our communities, so that we can provide the services that we need so badly as we're being overrun by this heroin epidemic, and also stressing trying to get people back to work. Just wanna say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I think there's certainly lots to be thankful for, probably was strongly advised, no political conversations at the table this year, but.
Oh, I think there's gonna be a lot of conversation.
If there's ever a year you don't wanna talk politics, this might be the one, but happy, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yeah, we had a little bit, my auntie Teen died, and I went to her funeral yesterday. Her last name's Durda, and I don't know if you recognize this name, but Michael Durda, my cousin, won a Pulitzer Prize for a book that he wrote, and he writes for the Washington, or the Washington Post. He lives in Washington, so, yeah, there was some debate going on between my cousins, and it got a little bit ugly in the back room.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Thanksgiving's gonna be a little awkward this year for some people.
Gonna schedule another funeral, are you?
Almost.
Well, the election certainly went the way you needed it to go, so that's what's important.
I'm grateful for that.
The, I passed you that resolution with regard to the bonds at the Port Authority. Teresa has it. Mr. Metzger's here from the port. My apologies to the board for not having you on the agenda, but we do need to get a resolution from the commissioners this week.
Yeah.
Come on up and get your fifteen minutes of shame, Mr. Metzger.
About a minute and a half, Pat. More than a half second. Good morning. Yesterday, the Port Authority met, and American Eagle is the new, American Eagle, I think, is the company, has purchased basically Wesleyan Village through some underwriters, and the Port Authority conduit it almost forty-three million dollars in bonds to help facilitate that, and we're, last piece of the puzzle is a resolution by the elected officials to certify those results.
Wonderful, economic development at its best.
It's almost, it's almost two hundred jobs retained at the village, and they, it was a newspaper article a couple weeks ago laying out the transition, doesn't appear there'll be any cuts, they wanna maintain the service at the current levels.
Well, one of the, one of the discussion points we had with them at the early on was what they were gonna do, since they were a logic company, we were concerned with executive jobs, management jobs. I can't tell you that we can hold them to anything in concrete, but they did assure us that they did not actually see any cuts in employment, they were hopeful for an expansion of employment opportunities, boy, restoring some of the services there. You know, a lot of people talk about job retention, job expansion, who's doing it in the community. We are doing it, we have been doing, we never stopped doing it, have we, Jerry? Pat, you guys are out there. The, without, without the issuance of these new funds, these conduit bonds, and the retirement of the old debt, this doesn't happen. I've been grievously worried that Wellesleyan Village was gonna close the last two years, I've been grievously worried that Welsleyan Village was gonna close the last two years, as that, one suitor after another came to the door and left. Uh, only a few of us knew that they were, they were in forbearance and they were precocious close to the edge. Uh, so this, this is job retention a, at its best. Uh, so when the naysayers out there, all wondering and saying, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? Or you have to team this or team that, we're quietly doing this job all the time. And, and thank you for reminding me that this, this was the retaining of all those jobs, because I didn't say that earlier and I, and I should have, and, uh, we're working with multiple employers on multiple levels, but, but a lot of times you can't be very v- v- boisterous about what you're doing, because they don't, they don't want that. Uh, especially, this deal was very, very sensitive getting it completed, so...
When you have how many residents in that home, people would be concerned about what was going to happen with their family members and such, and...
Sure, I...
Two-hundred employees, I mean, you're talking, I don't, how many residents are in Wesleyan Village?
I think they have a hundred and fifty-seven beds or something.
Okay, a hundred and fifty-plus people, they're plus two-hundred employees, you're talking three-hundred-and-fifty families affected, I mean, you can't be out spouting, here's what we're working on.
Right.
We've been, uh, we've been working very closely for several months, actually, with these guys to create a successful formula so we can be involved and, and help, uh, bring this to the front, so it really has taken some time, it was a little sensitive, but should be done now.
Yeah, we always hear what is government doing about jobs, and, you know, the reality is that the majority of new jobs are going to come from the companies that are already here. You know, and expansion from the employers that are already here, everybody always thinks you just, you know, the days of the a thousand doll, or a thousand-member, uh, plants or whatever, I mean, those days, you know, are long gone, but the big focus nowadays has to be on retention, and it's gotta be on expansion coming from the employers that are already here. That's where most, most of the development's gonna come from, or growth is going to come from.
Well, this takes some pressure off them, so they can enact their plan and maybe even expand.
Beautiful.
Thanks, Pat.
And Commissioner, yeah, and Mr. Kaylin knows more fully, but I can't devote, but we are working on another big expansion opportunity, uh, by, by being able to take our revolving loan funds into areas of the county that was not able to be served before, due to some problems, we're able to do that for them now, and, and hopefully in the next several weeks, Jerry, you think, we'll probably be announcing the creation of a lot of jobs. Uh, but, yeah, you don't get to talk about along the way, so I hope that good news comes before Christmas.
Okay, so I would move to, uh, or you need to read the resolution?
Yes, she would, so we're revenue bonds with the Lorraine County Port Authority for Wesleyan Village.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Mr. Gallo?
Hi.
Hi.
Want to...
Done with your report?
I'm done with my report?
Okay, so board correspondence.
I would, uh, move that we approve the board correspondence and this week waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Mr. Kaylin?
Hi.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning, the floor is all yours.
Brushing the podium.
Yeah, okay, well, uh, seeing no one wishing to participate in public comment, I would move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues outlined by the county administrator and the legal issues that were outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Hi.
Mr. Kaylin?
Hi.
Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Our mission is to capture and preserve the spirit, the sacrifices, and rich history of the American people. We want to honor those men and women who support and defend our way of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, as well as inspire future generations of Americans to understand how important it is to preserve this concept of freedom that we enjoy every day.
I knew that as a young child that I would join the military service, and that I would become a United States Marine. I wanted to give back to this country, to serve my country, I wanted to give back all of myself to this country. And being a Marine is one who accepts challenges and adversity, faces them head-on, and always knows and says to himself, I will never give up. We recreated this memorial to tell America's story from seventeen-seventy-five to present day. We want to captivate the hearts and minds of the American people to never forget the sacrifice that had been made to protect the rights and freedoms we have today. We need to keep America's sense of patriotism ignited, and a continued respect for those who support and defend our freedom and way of life, both here and abroad. We need to educate our future generations that we are a country of many people, but as Americans, we are one. Being American means flying the flag, to know the words to the National Anthem, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and bursting with pride when you hear those. It means being thankful for all those who have given their lives for this country. Finally, being an American means appreciating its great beauty.
As a volunteer nonprofit organization, we pledge our time, talent, and resources to honor the men and women who support and defend this country.
My name is Patricia A. Sexton, I'm the wife of Sergeant David Mason Sexton, from the US Army, who lost his life on March fifteenth, nineteen-seventy-one, and his remains have yet to come home to his son and I. During the years after I lost my husband, I felt like I needed to be doing something more for this country and our service. I went and got involved with Rolling Thunder, Chapter Five out of Ohio, we built a POW/MIA traveling wall that depicted the hundred-and-thirty-seven names that were still classified as either prisoners of war or missing in action. Then in two thousand four, Ron Smith joined, and all the years after that, we traveled, talking to military, talking to every, you know, family that we possibly could, and realized from what they were saying that we needed possibly to have something else that depicted the spirit of the American people and to honor our military men and women, our place in fire.
In January two thousand fourteen, Ray Simon of Ray Simon Art was contracted to paint the artwork. Ray's work always evokes a strong emotional feeling that pays tribute to the individual or event. He masterfully uses his artistic gift and integrates it with his deep love and reverence for American culture.
In two thousand thirteen, it was just a vision, but as of November two thousand fifteen, it will be a reality.
We encourage and challenge everyone to do whatever they can to honor those brave